Call the meeting to order. Stand for the pledge of allegiance, please.
I call allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. It is the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
So we have one board member online, so all the votes tonight will be taken with a roll call. Yeah, we do have some, because we have some action items. Um, will be taken via roll call, and so we'll have to do roll call right now. So I will turn it over to Dr. Smith.
For attendance, Wendy?
Here.
Kristen?
Here.
David G?
Here.
Annie?
Here.
Here.
Dan?
Here.
Noah?
Here.
Leslie?
Here.
Patricia?
Here.
Chad?
Here.
Sean?
Here.
Brian?
Here.
David T?
Here.
Tom Wells? And student reps Kate Parker and Luke Tinkum.
Luke is at soccer, and they're up 1-0. Let's go Bears. Okay, yeah, yeah, perfect, so let's go Bears. So, uh, a couple things before we jump into citizens' comments. Um, next board meeting, I just want to make sure I get these out of the way so I don't forget, we'll start at 5:30 because we're gonna have MSMA COM, because we voted to engage our last motion with them with the superintendent search. And there'll be a workshop for them to come go over what that could look like and all that stuff. And then the second half of that, that'll probably take about a half hour, they said, and the second half hour is gonna be a training to go over best practices before the board, uh, the second half. So that October 1 meeting will start at 5:30. And then I see we have a guest who I'd like to introduce themselves, so I will let, uh... I know my son calls you Deputy Brandon, so I don't know your last name off the top of my head, so my apologies. If you want to step up to the mic so folks can hear you, that'd be great, our school resource officer. Yup, right there.
I was gonna grab that. So my, my name is Brandon Van Wyk.
Yeah.
And most people struggle with that, last name there, so I, uh, you're in good company if that's you. Um, and I, I come, you can call me Van Wyk or Van Wick. I don't even, it is technically Van Wyk, but I, uh, I long ago stopped correcting anyone, and we go with whatever, so... Sheriff with the Kennebitt County Sheriff's Office, began as a corrections officer in 2017, worked in the jail for three years, and then have worked as a patrol deputy since then. Um, and I'm looking forward to a, a change of pace here in the school. Um, it's, it's been great getting to know kids. Uh, they hang out in the office every bit as much as they did when Nate was there. Uh, so I'm, I'm, uh, getting used to all that teenage drama. Uh, the stuff that's huge in their life is, uh, it's, it's, it's just interesting to see how their perspective is. But it's good, it's good, I'm glad to get to know the kids. Um, I, I hope to be a, I guess, the best way to sum up what I, what I hope to accomplish is to be what the name says. Um, an officer, so that's my focus, dealing in matters of, of, of law, and a resource. And, uh, that might mean sometimes stepping out of that role. I brought a kid over to Coney, to the, um, the CATC program there. I just gave him a ride, because due to medical reasons, they missed the bus. So things like that, I'm perfectly happy to do. Um, and I hope to be, um, along the way, making influence on kids. They, they need more than just, um, someone they might look up to because of my role. They need someone, in addition to someone who's just going to enforce the law, they need someone who's going to demonstrate for them, um, how to function in the world and contribute to society in good ways. So that, that might be a bonus thing that I, I hope to accomplish. Does anybody have any, does anybody have any questions?
Yeah. No, I just want, I thought it'd be great for you to meet the board. I maybe should've been done sooner, but we're here now, and welcome. I know you've been here for a little bit.
I was invited to the last one, but I couldn't make it, so, yeah.
Yup, well, thank you for being here tonight, welcome to RC38.
Thank you, thank you, it's good to be here.
All right, next up on the agenda, we have citizens' comments. I don't know if we have anyone signed up. There's anybody online, if you want to raise your hand? I'll save you weight. All right, I've gone over the rules, I think most people are here, but you have three minutes. Be respectful of policy, you know the drill.
I don't know three minutes, I don't need three minutes. I'm Steve DeAngelis, I'm a resident of Reed Field, um, on the Sturman Hill Road. And, um, I really just have two really quick things. And, um, I, I had sent an email requesting that the board add to the agenda, um, a consideration of changing, looking at the protocol for the way meetings, board meetings are run, and also a suggestion of, um, looking, preferably before we interview the superintendent's position, um, looking at the interview committees and the way those are structured. And, um, didn't end up on this one, but that happens sometimes, I get that. You know, there's a lot going on, you guys got a lot of things going on. But I would really hope that we could get those two things on there and have discussions about them. All right, that's all I need, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, next up is Tyler Dunn, former board member, welcome back.
Good evening, Tyler Dunn, Tana Mount Vernon, former board member. Um, I wanted to get up tonight just because I know a lot's gone on in the last three months. And I just wanted to say that, and encourage the board to take their time with the process that's about to unfold, uh, in selecting a superintendent. I think, given all that's transpired and all that's gone on, that it's not rush to fill the position. Let's take our time and look at what it is we want to accomplish as a district, um, and the direction we want to go in versus rushing to fill a position because that's what the crowd or, um, the people are pushing for. And they may be allowed vocal minority that's clamoring for action, clamoring for more information, but there's a lot of us out here in the community that are patient and willing to work with the district in any way that we can. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Diane, is there anyone online who wants to say comments? I know there might be people online, but I never clarify the difference. People remind me that, I'll get a text, "I'm here!", just so you know. Um, all right, I think that, yup, that was everybody. Next up is additions, adjustments to the agenda by the board of superintendent. I have one, I did email, uh, to give a heads up, and that's, um, to, I guess I'll make that C, waiving student fees for football and basketball games, uh, admission fees for students, um, so that will be C. And that's all I had.
And I have one addition to the agenda, which will be D, and that is the resignation of a grade five teacher, Joe Worcester, from Wayne Elementary School. And that's effective September 26th.
Wayne Elementary, September 26th, okay. All right. Anyone have anything else? I didn't hear from anyone, but opportunity, thank you. All right, so we will go into a presentation of assessments and school designations by Dr. Karen Smith.
Okay, so Diane has a slide deck in the board packets. I have, uh, some information, um, related to, um, how our schools, um, are identified by the Maine Department of Education. Um, it's called Maine Models of School Support. I did a presentation last year at the same, um, board meeting, and I'm going to update you with this year's. What you see in your packet is the letter from the DOE that we receive in the spring, letting us know, and this is in the board packet, just orienting the board members to what's in your packets. Um, and it's the letter that says what our schools are identified, um, for the 24-25 school year going into 25-26. And then behind that, there's some charts that, um, you can refer to that are in addition to the presentation, and I will, um, explain them, um, more thoroughly when we get to that.
And for people in the room, please, well, this presentation will be in the minutes when they are posted, so you will, you know, don't, it will be there. Just want to let the folks know that, because folks have asked me before, like, "How do I get this stuff?"
So the first thing, I will do a, a brief overview of Maine Models of School Support, and then I will, um, discuss our school data and the schools that are identified in the, um, specific categories that the state, um, categorizes, uh, schools in. And then I will review our 24-25 school year attendance data, and then our spring main through-year assessment for the grade levels that are tested, um, and then show how that's connected to our district goals for this school year. So the state has a model in a way that it informs, um, schools, um, at the local, state, and federal levels to determine what additional supports they need. And it informs decision makers about significant needs, um, across the state, um, depending on the school district. So there are key indicators that the state looks at to determine, um, the level that a student, uh, that a school falls under. And the first and foremost category is chronic absenteeism. And so chronic absenteeism is considered if a student is absent 10% or more of the time, um, they're considered chronically absent. And then academic achievement in math and literacy or, or ELA. And again, that's looking at the state main through-year assessment, and if they are at or above, um, the benchmark of reading state standards, or if they're below or well below. Um, then I also, it also measures English language proficiency. Um, we have a very small percentage of students, um, in our district, and any of this reporting, if a subpopulation has 10 or fewer students, it's not calculated into the overall, um, model. And then graduation rates, um, for high school. So these are the performance ratings that the state uses, um, so from emerging, developing, meeting, and excelling. I don't need to read that to you, but it's pretty self-explanatory. And then the four levels of support. So there's targeted school improvement, there's additional targeted support improvement, and then comprehensive support improvement, and then the comprehensive support improvement returning. And last year, when I presented, um, they called, the state formally called the, um, additional targeted support improvement, the ATSI, was called Tier One. So if you remember me saying Tier One last year, that's what it was, but they, um, the DOE decided that too many people were confused by using the Tier One, Tier Two, Tier Three system, um, so they, they did away with that. Um, and then the CSI, last year, um, schools were considered Tier Three schools, but they no longer are using that Tier Three designation. So Maine started this Models of School Support. Um, it was first implemented in 2018, 2019, using, it's always the year before's data. Um, and then there was a three-year more, then the COVID hit. And so there was a three-year, uh, moratorium on that, and then they started back up again in the 23-24 school year. So ATSI schools, um, are schools with one or more struggling student populations. And the support that the state provides really is professional development through the DOE, um, that's offered for free, and, uh, schools have to, principals have to have a school-level plan, um, for their school, but it does not have to be reported to the state. It just needs to be, um, a team that develops it with the principal, and, um, then someone from the district level oversees that process. Um, if the state did ask for it, we have to be able to present it, um, but it's not required to submit. And we have three schools that fall under this category, and that is Manchester Elementary, Reed Field Elementary, and Marana Cook Middle School. So it's, when you're, when you're identified as a school, they're looking at three-year cycles. And, um, it happens to be that the update with Manchester from the 24-25 school year is that they weren't flagged. Um, and so they still have the ATSI status, but you have to have three years in a row with a "no" to get off the list, so to speak. So that slide's pretty empty because they were a "no", and, um, if you look, the board members look in your, at your tables, I have, I'm sorry, your, we are folders. For each school, I actually have the printout from, um, the DOE data dashboard that shows each school and how that designation works. So the next school is Reed Field. Sorry, Jeff, uh, it was flagged, um, and so they are continued as ATSI status. Um, and so the indicators, um, of why Reed Field was designated was chronic absenteeism, first and foremost. That's the first thing they look at. And then it was the subgroups of economically disadvantaged, um, students and students with disabilities in both, uh, ELA and math. The next school is Marana Community Middle School, and they were flagged, um, so they continue, um, as an ATSI school. Um, and their indicators were white, economically disadvantaged, and students with disabilities, and again, chronic absenteeism, and then for math. So then we have our, um, CSI schools, um, and both Wayne and Mount Vernon are continued, are, are considered returned, so they're going another three years. Um, so these are also Title One schools, so both, um, Wayne and Mount Vernon are school-wide Title One schools, um, and where all students continue experiencing challenges and failing to meet the state's exit criteria. Um, so they do get comprehensive support from the state, they have an assigned leadership coach. They have to do a very intensive school-level plan and show evidence that they're using, um, evidence-based interventions. They do receive additional funds to help support, um, their professional development. Um, and Mount Vernon again, and Wayne qualify under those two designations. So Mount Vernon, actually, for the 24-25 school year, get Michelle smiling, um, was not flagged. So they got, they got a "no", so, um, we keep track of that. The goal is that she, uh, that Mount Vernon will have a "no" again next year. And then Wayne was a "yes", um, and again, chronic absenteeism first and foremost, and then white students, and then for reading is what the designation, like, uh, how it was identified. So, um, at the November, um, 19th board meeting, um, the principals will give updates on their plans. I will work with them to go over their plans from last year. Um, and this is, this is the ATSI, um, the, the CSI already, I'm already working, um, with Jeanette and Michelle on their intensive plans. Um, but the Manchester, uh, Reed Field, and the middle school, I will work them, with them on their ATSI plans. And then all five schools, um, the principals will give an update at the November 19th meeting on, um, their plans for this, um, school year. So to recap, the CSI schools are Mount Vernon and Wayne. They have comprehensive plans in place, support from the state, assigned coach, and, um, principal leadership. The ATSI schools, Manchester, Reed Field, and the middle school, um, they will be establishing plans that align with the district goals, um, and I will work, again, alongside with them and then, um, their leadership teams in their buildings, um, to, uh, create their plans for this year, and with the focus improving on student attendance and increasing academic achievement and growth. So now, when I just update you on, um, our indicators, um, so the chronically absent from the 24-25 school year, I have, um, the, the designations of what's considered good attendance, at-risk attendance, chronically absent, and severely chronically absent. And again, that's the percent of days that they're absent, of the days, um, they're supposed to attend. So we do keep a running tally every month that the principals, um, review with their MTSS teams to see who at that moment in time, um, is considered, um, at risk or who is chronically absent. And every school building, um, has, um, strategies and interventions in place that they, um, use, um, with their MTSS teams to address those students that, um, and providing them support, um, and working with their families with regard to their, um, absenteeism. And then, um, so if you look at the district-wide goal, um, so it's by June 2026, the district attendance rate will improve from 94% to, that's the overall rate, from 94 to 95%. And the chronically absent rate will drop from 14% to 10%, as measured by our Power School data management system and daily attendance reports. Um, just to show, the 23-24 school year, our attendance rate, um, was, uh, 93.4. Then it, it improved to 94% in 24-25. And then our chronically absent rate at the end of the 23-24 school year was 18%. And then, um, at the end of the 24-25 school year, it improved to, it to 14%. So that's, um, quite a significant, um, improvement. So one thing that we do have to, um, keep track of and ensure is that we have, um, 95% of our student population, um, participating in the state assessment. That's federal law, um, and, um, so we, um, have to come up with plans. Um, we had to do this a couple years ago with a plan to, um, because we dipped below, um, that 95% threshold, um, and so, right around COVID, so it, it, we had a reason, um, but, um, so we've been working on that, um, and, I mean, we have great attendance rates, um, so it's, it's...
Yeah.
Yup. So here's our main through-year assessment results, um, for math and reading. We, uh, the state tests our students, um, in grades three through eight, and then, um, at grade 10. And this shows, um, the percentage of students that were, um, at or above, um, state expectations, and those were, that were, um, well below and below in both of those, uh, areas. And then next to it, I, um, indicated, um, if it was, um, and that's actually supposed to be an equal sign, equals at state average is the yellow box, and then, um, if it, we were above or if we were below the state average.
So, okay. I'm following now. So reading, we're doing pretty well. Math, we've got some work, you know, if I'm reading that correctly.
Yes, you're reading that correctly.
Thanks.
Oh, that, I don't know why that, you can keep going. Okay, so then from our, um, district goals, um, so for our math achievement, if you, if we looked at the overall average of students across all those grade levels that, um, were at or above state expectations, it is around 52%. So we are going to work to try to get to 55% with no single grade level performing below the 50th percent. That's a pretty lofty goal in some of those, um, areas that you saw with the, um, red arrow going down. Um, but I think we, um, we have some plans in place, and, um, those math scores at the middle school and was the primary area, um, and Michelle is working diligently at the middle school, um, with them implementing the new math curriculum. And then the reading achievement, it was at 68% average, which is really good across the district. Um, and so if we can, you know, um, push it to 75%, again, lofty goal, um, but we have, um, our elementary literacy curriculum in place, and we're seeing it's trending up each year. And then as they go into the middle school and high school, um, we're, we're going to see that it's gonna continue, um, to show that we're doing really well in that area. And all of this information, um, is public. Um, and so if you want to learn more about Maine Models of School Support, you can go right onto the Maine DOE website, and all of that data is on, um, the, um, data dashboard that, that the Maine DOE has, um, set up. Um, and you can see all kinds of data on the data dashboard, so I encourage anyone to go on and look at that. Any questions?
David, which one?
Might be better answered later, just questions on, one thing, uh, one of the things everybody was evaluated on was white.
Yeah, I was wondering the same thing.
That's just a sub, that's a category, yeah.
White, so there are more white kids in this school, so it's, uh, something to evaluate them on, or...
So we don't, uh, we don't have a, a diverse population, like some school districts in the state.
So it's saying that that population isn't diverse, it is substantially white.
Yes, if you look at that, as it's considered a subgroup, yeah.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, it's like one...
Meaning even, even though the whole school is maybe that category, because all those results fall under that category, it's flagged for a...
Right, so that race is one of the indicators.
Right.
Yeah, they're looking at race, yeah.
Yeah, okay. Uh, Mr. Holman?
This may also seem obvious, Karen, what defines absent? A student is here half a day, um, if a parent calls in and says, whatever, you know? What defines absent? And there's, there's fractional days, and I'm curious if, if not just ours goes on, do we see a trend through the year, like, does absenteeism grow or decrease over the year? Are there trends that are, that are normal?
I think there definitely are normal trends. Um, we have, and, you know, more than happy to show, we wanted to take a look at it. We keep a, a data tracking tool that shows every month, um, and we've collected that for the last two years since we started really looking and trying to, I mean, we needed to have a baseline on, on how we could address, um, the data, um, on attendance. So we have a pretty, um, we have a pretty intensive data management system that we're using that tracks that, um, and shows that monthly trend. I'd be more than happy to show, show that.
If a, if a parent calls in and says, "My kid's sick", that's still absent? Like, what defines any, any not being here, or is it fractional for a day?
Right, chronically, uh, so someone who is, a, a student is absent whether it's, you know, who... Excuse or not, right, yeah, you're absent, you're absent.
But it's a whole day, not a partial day, I think, is what you're...
So you have to be, you have to admit, meet a minimum threshold that you're at least... Yeah, that you're there.
Yeah, it's a half-day.
That's unusual.
Yeah.
A whole lot, a whole lot of races going on, you know?
No, I, I've learned this pretty well, my son plays hockey, proud of that, but he leaves a lot of Fridays, so we fly to Massachusetts at noon time, and it helps with the chronic absenteeism. That's how it works, I know that's the case. Because we don't want him to be chronically absent to affect the district, so we, my, well, we, I picked him up many a days, and he gets dismissed at the correct time, that's how it works. Um, anyone else?
All right, of course, cue back up to the slide that had the percentages on it, the bar graphs, who's running the slides? Yeah, I think that's the one. I mean, is this, is it fair to say that this is sort of a report card for the, for the RSU? Um, and that the collective goal of everybody, from the folks cleaning the floors, driving the buses, all the way up to superintendent, principal, and finally us, is... all the way up to superintendent, principal and finally us is, this is, this is kind of our report card, right? So those are lofty goals to try to hit. Last year, I think I said we ought to be ashamed of these numbers. And I still think we are ashamed of those numbers and certainly appreciate efforts to try to get those better. There's, the, the reading does look good. I, I wonder why that worked so well and it seems like math struggles. But anyway, I, I think this is one of those things, like if we have one focus of the whole board and the whole everything, it should be this slide, right? So everything we do collectively ought to be focused on, how do we get this math up? How do we get the reading up? And hopefully next year, we see more, more above state averages than below. And whether you believe in these numeric systems or not, they're, they're out there. They're telling and folks pay attention.
Brian, I hundred.
Thank you for sharing.
I hundred percent agree, that needs to be the, and we're going to talk about board goals here in maybe 10 minutes.
Uh, sorry.
No, 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 let's keep that thought is what I'm saying, let's keep that thought. Mr. Joe?
Yes, um, last year, we had to make some top cuts, you know, teachers and stuff. Do you think this is really feasible with some of the cuts that we made last year? That we could bring some of these scores up?
I mean, that, that's a really good question. I, it would be hard to really know if, if a certain position had that much of an influence in the overall data. This is like overall data for the district. You'd have to dig down a little deeper in the data to, to really see if that made a difference.
Okay, thank you.
Good, yeah, just.
Yep. Go down here.
Okay.
Yeah.
I applaud that we're doing okay, but that we need to do better. I get very anxious when we start saying, this has to be focused because there's so much more to the school experience and the education and the learning than the scores. Having had a stepson and a son that were very smart, but did not do well on the averages, but learned a great deal. I get anxious when we, if we put too much focus on that. Not against having a focus on it because just as Brian said, we do get evaluated by it. And, and the kids will be in a way on their graduation, they're applying for jobs that they're evaluated on with scores that they have. I agree with you, Dave, on the question of, of watching carefully how we bring things up and whether, not even as much for me, whether the attrition that we allowed last year before this, this past year has hurt, but rather where we need, you can think of it as something put back or need additional support of some sort. And it may be through the other programs, because that's what convinced me to allow the attrition without getting up in arms was the explanations and work that I saw that said that other aspects of what we are providing would help make up for some of that attrition. So now we have a year that we're going to, all of us and even more, our teams of teachers and administrators are going to be watching to see where we are needing to add more support and how to do it, whether it's through other things or whether it's through ed techs and so forth. Sorry, thank you.
No, thank you, David. I'm gonna let Leslie go, she's what we had on this, Brian.
Um, I'm just gonna say that like we have, we have not sort of scads of metrics that help us to understand where we are. But we have to be careful we don't pendulum swing and that these still are a byproduct of everything that we're still doing. It's not that these are the, these are only metrics for these few things. There's a lot that goes into whether these are strong or that these continue to be better, whether it's, and it's still greater than any one ed tech or, or teacher still too. It still has to do with how schedules are compiled, how accommodations are made, you know, where the support is in a number of different places. We have other metrics like absenteeism and some of these other things. But these, these, this is our output of the things that we're doing. These just happen to be very specific as longstanding metrics, math and reading. But it still is a bigger, I think it's, there's still more symptoms that go into these things. So when we say we need to focus on these, I think it's still right because if these are some of the only metrics that come out of how our schools are performing, that still is a byproduct of the whole system, then focusing on that is right. It's how we focus on it. We've got to be balanced in our approach to trying to focus on these things and be careful we don't pendulum swing and sort of whack a mole at what we think is the way to solve. Something looks really specific, but there's more that goes into that than just its specific, specific curriculum or its specific resource, like it's bigger than that.
Thank you, Leslie.
I was just gonna, I was just gonna say, I'd be curious about the, probably doing middle school math and how that, what strategy we have to get that up. Cause it seems like if we had plotted that on a bar graph, it's a significant dip for middle school and that comes back up to 49% for high schools. So things are going well, they're not going well, I'm not going to point fingers, but I'm just curious. Everybody else is going to see that problem too, so how do we get out of that? And the second thing regarding attrition, as I recall, we had, the total number of students here is getting lower and that was another thing to be considered when we're working it, not keeping quite so many folks here. So as the number of students drop, the number of educators and support personnel also have to pivot, so.
So I think that will be part of the November 19th update, the question Brian just asked, perfect. I just want to make sure because not, I want to add that, because that's important. Thank you. Any more questions on this topic? Anyone thinks, oh, Pat, go ahead.
Well, I don't have a question, but the overall well-being of the child is what we want to consider, right? And then it will, it probably will go up.
Yeah, thanks, Pat. If anyone has any questions, I know that was a lot to absorb, my brain's still rolling with that. Please feel to email Karen or reach out and you can get those answered. This is all, we're going to be talking about this the rest of the year, I mean, in some way or another. So, all right, thank you, Karen. So next up is a middle school hiring update. So if we could talk about first, because I have heard from some board members, multiple board members actually, and this is what the board means about and where this takes place, is if we're going to move forward with a search for the middle school principal beating a superintendent. I have, so I know Mr. Holman's reached out to me about that. He had that question, I think David, Matt may have asked me that question and a few others. I didn't mean to call you out, but I just, there's been multiple people have asked me that question. And I said we'd talk about that tonight. But first, I think what would be important is to learn from Dr. Smith, how many people may have applied and where we are in the search. And then we can go into the conversation of do we want to move forward? And then we have a plan in our packet on how we're going to move forward. So does that work for everybody? All right, perfect, go ahead.
So at this time, we have had nine inquiries with the position. We have five that, or yeah, five that have all their application materials completed. We have, let's see, one.
Karen, can you clarify that just for a second?
Yes, sorry.
They have all their application materials completed.
Like they, they, some people drop off some parts of their materials or they didn't really, they didn't fill out the application, they don't have their transcript. They, so there's all these pieces that we need for an application to be complete.
So we have five people that are completed, okay?
Right, so, and, and our human resources specialist, you know, will update, email, reach out to them, ask them for those materials and so forth. That's the process that, that works. So we have, again, we're looking for a, a building level principal that's certified. And we have one, two, three, four that are certified of the nine, one that has a conditional. We have seven of the nine are external applicants and we have two internal applicants.
Okay, so that's where we're at with people who applied. So I guess next, does anyone have any questions about that? I mean, not much more that you can share, because, you know.
Is it still open for a while longer?
When, when's it going to be open?
The principal? It is posted.
Yeah.
It's still open, so the mic possibly.
Oh yeah, absolutely. This is just an update as of four o'clock.
Yeah, but I, for this discussion, I was asked to have this, so I, well, I thought that was important information because I think it's different if we had, for me, if there was zero people who applied. So I guess I'll let board members take it from there before I add anymore.
Just that, the obvious follow-up to that is, when is it closed? Or is there no close date?
We had it till a suitable candidate, candidate was found.
So it's open until, right, thank you.
So I know there were some folks that reached out. What are people, I mean, it doesn't need to be a formal vote, but what are people's thoughts on moving forward before we spend time on the next steps?
Look at, so I wasn't sure what we'd get for applications. That actually exceeds what I thought. And of course, a question was in mind, is having a permanent superintendent or not, is that going to, how that will affect it? But five, and I've heard some of the names of people, it seemed like, oh, so like this stuff we decided, that's encouraging. So Carson was just wondering about that, but this answers that. So in terms of that, that's it. David, do you have?
Nope, I'm good.
So this week, does anyone have any question? Okay, this.
Not a question, but just since we're discussing, I, unless you guys or the admin team feel that we really ought to have a superintendent before we get, no, I'd like to have, my initial response is, I'd like to see us with a fully functioning administrative team to welcome the superintendent.
Yeah, I'm all on board with it. I just wanted to have this conversation here in the boardroom. And I told people, just put a pin in that and talk about it here. So I think it sounds like unless anyone's objects, we're going to continue to move forward to advertise our principal.
Yep.
Mr. Holman?
I have one thought. I remember Steve D'Angelo telling the story the other week, and I've heard him tell it before, because it's a good story, about his interview back, you know, in Ice Age and how many people were there and how that kind of shook him and impressed him in a sense like, whoa, the community is really here. I look, I think it's nine. I know it gets cumbersome, but I wonder about more, like if the committee was even larger than that. Four, if he, you know, I'm just wondering. It has like one board member, I think four professional staff is actually a nice number. So I just really reflect in that story and two community members' parents, like I could see more than that. But that's just responding to that and I think it's a statement of itself, like that this real, you know, this matters.
I think nine is, well, why don't we hold there? I, I'm not, this method, like, and why don't we have Dr. Smith go through kind of the timeline? I mean, I know people can read, but I think we need to summarize and discuss to make sure what it's going to be.
So that's in, that's in your packet. And, and so Chair Roderick asked me to put a, put a plan together, so I did that over the weekend. We talked about some things. I just want to make it clear, we have not, no one has started reviewing applications. And our HR specialist has the applications. I just asked for those numbers as an update. And I told her specifically just to be able to say the information that I just presented to you. So, because I want to make sure the process is being followed. So, so Sean and I had talked about it and we thought that the current high school, middle school principal serving as the hiring manager of the committee. We then, I was, and Sean did, I was going to start on Monday, but he said let's wait until Wednesday, so.
Because I had heard from board members that they might be, they might not want to keep this.
So from there, put a call out to administrators and have one other administrator on the committee. And then if there are multiple that want to be on it, we'll just use a lottery system and select someone to be on that. And they can serve as a member or they can serve as a co-manager with Principal La Forge. And then from there, we would do our committee member selection. And so for that, it would be a survey that would go out and, and then use a lottery system again.
So it would be four professional staff, one support staff, one board member, one student member, which would be a school board representative, because it's appropriate. And then two community members. And again, all those people have been chosen based on a lottery, so that's not stacked in any, or no bias. It's just a lottery and might get lucky and get drawn or not, if you want it, you're interested.
So from there, at the September 3rd board meeting, the vote, the board voted to do a survey. And so this is where that community voice will come in. And so we will work together to craft a survey, bring it to the committee, to review it, finalize it, so that it then goes out. So we will, I put, you know, kind of details when it opens, when it closes. This might have to be adjusted a little bit. And then the results will be synthesized and shared with the hiring managers, the full committee, and then we'll make that public so everyone can see, okay? And so, you know, questions on what do we want for a middle school principal, you know, get some of those questions that really are trying to seek community out, you know, input from a broad perspective across all four of our towns and what we want to see at the middle school. And then there's also a, through MSMA, they have anti-bias training and hiring, if you're on a hiring committee training. So I want the committee to also participate in that training before they start reviewing applications. So we will do that. And then we'll start the first round of interviews. The HR specialists will be working with the hiring manager throughout this whole process to make sure that everything runs smoothly and that candidates are contacted, interviews are set up, the space of where it's going to happen is set up, all these logistical details. And.
Then the decision.
Right, and so, and then this is where, like it has to really be up to the hiring manager and the committee, you know, you know, are they, some, in some instances, there's a clear, clear-cut candidate and they just send one candidate, you know, to go to superintendent for final, second interview. Sometimes there's not a clear-cut candidate and, I mean, I would like to think that they could find, you know, the committee can come up with, but sometimes it can be split. And so then that has to go through that next layer. And then we can start the process all over again if we end up not having a candidate that meets the expectations of the committee. Or if an offer is extended and they don't accept. So, does anyone have questions about that process?
This would be 11 people total, because there's nine from what Karen laid out and then the hiring manager. So the 11 people total right now, which I think is a pretty big committee.
It's a pretty big.
One thing that we did, just to fold, we did kick around having one person from each town. That would put you at 13, if we want to do that. And then one person from each town in the community, we can do that.
Oh, so when I do the, yeah, we could do that.
We could do that to add two more community members, 13 would be a pretty.
I like that idea.
So 14 community members, so when we put.
No, four.
I'm sorry, four community, four community members. So when we put out the call, they would have to say which town they're in. And then there'll be a lottery for each town. Yeah.
Yeah, go ahead, Mr.
I, I think that's an improvement. Yes, it is. I also remember, actually, when we hired the last principal, like I was on, it's like, there's a lot of people. I think that added value. So I like that, I was actually going to suggest potentially one more board member, but make sure that they came from two different towns and one more community person, which is the same count. But I'm happy either way.
So I like that, I was actually gonna suggest, um, potentially one more board member, but make sure that they came from two different towns, and one more community person, which is the same count, but I'm happy either way, honestly.
I think the board is gonna have, like, I don't know, I'm open to all the thoughts, I.
I'm open, I just, but I like, I like what you suggested, I think.
No, I'm open to the thoughts, I just threw that out there. Go ahead, Brian.
How does this stack up to, like, is this process the same for a high school principal, middle school principal, uh, elementary school principal? Like, when they hired Jeff Boston two hundred years ago, or however long he's been here? You know, is it, is it something like this for everybody? Is this new to me, since I've been on the board, this is the first principal hiring I've been involved with? So, sorry if that's a dumb question, just curious.
I, I mean, I can say that this is best practices in hiring.
Okay.
And especially if you're hiring a, a principal.
Thank you.
And, why do I say this, I just wanna be clear. It always hasn't been consistent, and I'd like to get to, as board chair, like, guide the superintendent and intern to get to a consistent way of doing it. Because sometimes it is a big committee, and I think other people, I don't wanna put them on the spot, were hired in a very small committee and just brought to the board. So I would like it, I think the board should, and this is my opinion, should we should, if we, I'm not saying we can't tweak it, but it needs to be consistent for everybody.
That's my belief.
And we need to start doing that for every position, and make sure that these hiring practices match our policy and match the law. Which Karen put a lot of time in, and we talked over the weekend about this to make sure it was. And we need to have this, these, I mean, it's a lot of work, but we need to have this, so if we're hiring a teacher or the cook, it's consistent every time we hire a teacher, a cook, or anybody. Then that's the goal for me as board chair. And I'm not saying that's not, doesn't happen, but the hirings I've been in, they have not been consistent. I'm gonna be open and honest while we're moving forward, and that's what we're doing.
Even if the consistency is that it's laid out as that it will be this way for a professional staff, or for a support staff, or for an administrator, for, because it may, it may warrant being slightly different depending on.
Correct.
The, 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 what the impact or the level of position in the, um, area of responsibility, the size, size of responsibility.
Hire a teacher.
Because I'd say that the second, the second, a second member of the board exists, Dan, if that is in place. Because if that is in place, then I, I trust what will happen next, because it's clear, you know? And so when we're trying to hire folks, I'm hoping that, that, and I, we just haven't had, I haven't had a chance to ask if there's more information to share, but, that if there's a way of sitting down, and you rubric, and you, and you rank folks in a way that's, that has a criteria, so that you come out, and you've done that the same for all candidates who sat in front of.
Yeah, and we do do that currently, we do have our.
Okay, so I just think.
Yeah, and that's, yep.
That's it.
No, it's not.
Oh, it's not in here, but yeah, yeah, but I think the committee will be shown, yeah.
You mean, you have a rubric already in place?
So when the committee develops their questions, they'll have a ranking system and a rubric, so that, yes.
That's good.
Yep.
So I guess for conversation, I'm proposing we add a community member from each town. Does anyone have anyone?
That I get, that's perfect. Is that, is that gonna be the lottery as you proposed earlier, so?
Yeah, everything's a lottery, so that I don't have, I don't wanna choose, because I can't win if I choose. So it's a lottery. It could be multiple peo, it could be all community, well, I don't know if any administrators, I don't know where people live, but it could be a lot of community members. If the lottery came out the right way. Could be all community members, so. Hey, so we're gonna add four community members, is any, everyone good?
Yep.
Dave?
Just double checking, uh, the board still has to vote on this?
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah, all this comes to the board, if it comes to us and we say, I don't know how many people, a lot of people.
Thirteen.
Yeah, thirteen people didn't do the, we could eventually, but I would be shocked if that happened, I'd be shocked. It wouldn't be good if it happened, so, in my opinion. I mean, it could almost get to us and someone could withdraw, that's happened to me before in other committees, like, other hiring committees I've been on, so. Can't promise anything, my fingers crossed it goes smooth. So, we don't need to vote on this, it's just, is everybody good?
On the change from two to four?
No.
The whole point.
Meaning, is that what you're asking?
Yeah, is everybody good?
Yes.
Did we vote on changing the numbers?
No, this isn't a formal, this is a.
One, one comment, I really appreciate how quickly you guys put this together, how detailed it is, and thank you very much for chasing the ground, it's a short notice, it's great, thank you.
I will get the HR specialist on it.
And then there'll be a message sent out to everyone in the world on how you participate in the grand lottery. Okay. All right, so next, school board goal setting. So, we have last year's goals, we have the goals, this sheet here, I know there's a little confusion, I got some emails. Uh, these are goals, these goals, can you explain who, I know you said district goals, like Karen and Doc Smith, can you explain who was involved in setting these goals? That's helpful for me.
So the district goals, um, I'll be honest, um, I take the, the data, and I was, um, directed by, um, the former superintendent. Um, and taking our data that we collect and gather with our chronic absenteeism, um, and then our achievement goals. And then it goes to the A-team, and the A-team reviews it over our summer treat. And then each building principal will go back to their buildings and create their building level goals, um, based off from, um, district-wide goals.
Got it, okay, that's helpful to me, I just didn't know, wasn't a hundred percent sure, it probably was told to me before, but it didn't process, so. So, all right, so board goals, I think we have the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five goals in our packet to start from. I, obviously, every year we do this, the budget's the number one item, like, that's our number one job. So, I'll start there, I think that needs to be a goal. I don't, I mean, that's, yeah, that's the board's number one job, is to develop a budget, so I think that's one goal we have. I'll just throw out three I have to start the conversation. The second one is to hire a superintendent, a full-time superintendent, I mean, that's very important, it's the second one I have. And then the third goal that I wrote down was to improve communication. I mean, we started on that last year, we put out newsletters explaining, I actually read some of them today to refresh my memory, uh, about how the board works, how the budget process works. There was a start on doing a podcast, but we never quite got there, this time, equipment, I don't know, money, all the above, so I can't remember why. So, I'd like to improve communication amongst everybody, even that's, you know, me, or board members going to select board meetings and updating, I mean, I can't make anyone, but I, I'm willing to go to Reed Field. You know, or go to the library and offer myself up for an hour once every couple months, you know, whatever, I think those are all things we could do. So, those are the three things I had, and I figured I'd just throw them out there to start things off.
Leslie. As far as your bullet on improving communication, I mean, I think that almost still needs to be a standing item, even if it's a matter of, um, reviewing it and seeing if something should change. Because I, um, spend a lot of time on our website and on our landing pages, um, and there's a lot, and I think information is dispersed sort of kind of all over the place. I, I still feel like that, a piece of that bullet isn't just some of the things you just talked about, but if we make it easier for a broader base to access some information in an easier, in an easier manner, off our district website, I think that is also a chance that that helps to improve as well.
Yep, that can be part of it, absolutely. Others? Mr. Treba?
Do you go first?
Well, are we still talking about one, or can we jump?
We can talk about whatever, just throw it all, we're taking notes, and.
Number two, you talked about superintendent finding a new one. In the meantime, because I, I'm looking at all this wonderful work, there's a lot of work, and we, we've got a lot ahead of us. Is it appropriate to talk about maybe getting Dr. Smith an assistant superintendent like Jay had? Is that something to think about, to get someone second-in-command meantime, or?
Well, I, anything, I mean, there's money value added to that, I don't know if that's something, we'd have to see if that's possible.
Yeah.
That would be a short-term thing.
Short-term thing.
We can discuss that, I can come back, I'm not ready to answer that question at this moment, I gotta be honest. But, we can review that and bring it back to a future, the next board meeting.
Okay.
Is that fair?
Yes.
Okay, thanks. Uh, Mr. Treba?
Yeah, I, I think your, your points are spot-on, communications is, it maybe ebbs into what you're talking about, to, to be down, to have our high school principal also being the middle school principal for a while, having, um, Karen's assistant superintendent be stepping into this role, uh, to try to do that, and develop, for everyone, two jobs. One, it's, I think to your point, it's challenging, so, that may not be exactly the person we need, but are there personnel we need to help us reach these goals? Whether it's somebody with a superintendent search, for example, from MSMA to step in and, and help, because you can't, you can't expect our folks to do everything, right? But otherwise, I, I think you're right, no one else can hire a superintendent but us, nobody else can get the budget or the handle but us. And communication is paramount, what I was gonna suggest is that we get a lot of documents at the board meetings, and we don't always get them ahead of time, uh, which would be super helpful. I'm on a lot of boards, this is the only board I'm on that I would get everything ahead of that, I get some bids, but not all of it. I know administratively, it's a challenge, but standing copying that, putting that on a website link for everybody to see every meeting is super helpful in terms of communications. And, and it's helpful for all of us, so, it's, it's not something that's gonna cost us a lot of money, it is something that's a little bit of a paradox, actually, but that, like you said earlier, there's nothing here that we get that isn't always, so we should share that with folks, and, and goes right to your communications point, so, I think those are, those are all spot-on.
Absolutely, and, um, also, like, the budget committee was a huge improvement in the budget, I think everyone agreed, we went into way deeper, I just wanna bring up some positives too, usually we do that in this discussion. The budget committee was a huge shift in how we did the budget, something I had worked on to get for a number of years, and we finally got it, and I was super excited, because, like, we could really get into the weeds, and, uh, so that was a positive, and Mandy put a lot of work into that, and thank you, Mandy, for that, so. Leslie?
So the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five goals, I mean, naturally, what you just listed didn't include academic results.
Right.
And academic results, what's going on?
That's why I'm open for others.
So, um, but I mean, I, I think some of what we also looked at last year was, we looked at still the previous year and said, you know, are any of these still, still in the standing, right? And, and the first bullet was still around the budget and how we indicate, have it indicated success for that, which lines up with one of the ones that you've listed. The second one still said that the board will support student success and well-being in all areas as we strive to improve academic outcomes for all students, so they may achieve their highest potential. And there was a sub-bullet to that saying that we'd support the ongoing academic growth and improved student attendance. The school board endorses the goals set by the administrative team, which was the district goals we just talked about. And, meeting target scores for new year growth and achievement, math and literacy, as well as meeting the target for daily attendance. I think that, that is a bullet that, that really almost stays every year as well, even if the district goals and plans slightly shift, this is still in support of the district goals defined by curriculum and the A-team, and so on and so forth.
I agree with that a hundred percent, so I, I would propose we have a goal of doing whatever, I mean, we can broaden this out, word smith it and bring it back for next meeting to be voted on. We keep some type of that bullet, and do whatever we can to support our, because that's one of our jobs, is to support our administration, and support them in the district goals, so that's part of another bullet. I agree a hundred percent.
Yeah.
I just shared the three I had to start conversation here with other people.
Yeah.
Because I sit around by myself all day, yeah, I only talk to myself.
Yeah, we get some amazing goals to achieve this year, so you know, like.
It gets a little wild when I, the dog starts talking, so, I wanna hear you all talk, and that's what I'm trying to do here.
Well, this one covers well-being, sorry, well-being also, so this one, this one covers the well-being of the child, of students. So that, that hits not just academics.
Correct. I like it, um, Kristen?
So when you sent the email asking us to think about goals, um, I also, as I'm sure we all did, thought about hiring a superintendent, which is really important. But also making sure, going back to what Brian said about, uh, using all the positions, how we're kind of stretched in administratively, um, so maybe adding, making sure all of our administration positions are filled, instead of just superintendent.
I think, yeah, I think that makes sense, yep.
Mine's related to this.
Okay, Leslie, Chad, what do you think?
I'm good.
Do you have anything to add?
Not yet.
Okay.
So I, I agree with your bullet in essence, which is I think that our, a well-functioning administrative team needs to be put in places of gold for the year. But what I would say also though is that Michelle and Karen, right now, stepping into other roles, have a unique opportunity to see things from a different place than they would usually see them. And I would actually believe that there's a chance that more staff would benefit from having some exposure like that, um, even if it's not arrived at in this particular way. So, I would say that while we still are strengthening the plan for our administration as a whole of our superintendent, absolutely. I think that it's still being very careful in how we move forward to feel like our plan for an administrative team that supports all these bullets may not still look exactly as, we, even just in a few weeks, all of us sitting here may not still think of it exactly the same way. We have to have a well-functioning administrative team in plan, and I, I don't know exactly what that looks like, we still benefit from where we are right now as we move forward. And, it's, I still stand by, we have to have the right people.
Yeah.
So I don't, I don't want there to be a goal that we can't measure, that if we don't put bodies in particular spots that we've achieved a goal, when our goal is a high-functioning administrative team that has a solid plan on how to support kids moving forward, so. I know Amy, nobody's here, Amy's not here taking, oh, Mandy, you filling it?
Yeah, she's not, Mandy's.
Mandy's still here, okay, okay. I'm like, hold on, this is a lot of notes, I haven't seen Karen put a pen to the paper yet, it's gonna struggle to rewrite, okay.
And you can go back and watch it, and I do, and you can actually put the, you can actually put the meetings in AI, and it will spit it all for you and give you the quick search. My daughter taught me that, and Annalise is crushing it in there. Anyway, good point.
I just wanted to make the focus, right, and I'm not saying that there's a right or a wrong way to do that, or what you're saying is not true, I just wanna be careful that we put down on paper saying that this is what we'll do, and then if we measure it again, if we didn't do that, did we fail, we might not have, or, you know, or the other way around, so, but I know we're trying to do something.
Yeah, no, that, that makes sense.
Yeah.
David, did you?
Yeah, um, I really like all four that we have for this past year, I like teaching in some form.
Yep.
Plus, as we said, the hiring of the superintendent and getting a solid administrative team.
Yeah.
And in different formats, is, yes, inspiration can lead us in many ways as we listen to our community.
Pat, I think is next.
Well, is Amy still here, around? Okay, thank you.
Brian?
I know you didn't wanna call me, but I'm.
No, I'm not, no, I'm trying to hit Noah and Chad at this, so, I'm trying, I'm trying.
I just think it's, it's kind of funny that this thing we approved there, uh, last year, our second twenty twenty-four, said we're doing a great job with the budget, if we get the June twenty twenty-four budget approved, so, maybe this year, we should aim for the twenty twenty-six budget, if it gets approved, this part of our twenty-five, twenty-six goal. But anyway, and also, we spelled "the" wrong, uh, in the first tree, so, as educational professionals, we probably ought to pay a little attention to that, anyway.
Sounds like we have reading support down here.
All right, so I will, unless anyone has anything else to add, I will take all of this, summarize it, put it in a document that I'll share that folks can individually, don't reply all, please don't do that. Individually send back, and then we'll have it for the next meeting to go over, so I'm good to everybody?
Yeah.
And if you have any other ideas you think of, especially Chad and Noah, pretty quiet over there, I shouldn't do that, but I'm going to, um, send them my way. Everybody good? All right, perfect. Um, so next, we are moving, we did the goal set, okay, action items. Approval of minutes of September third, twenty twenty-five board meeting. Um, so next, we are moving, we did the goal to, okay, action items. Approval of minutes of September third, twenty twenty-five board meeting.
I move, we approve the minutes of September third, twenty twenty-five board meeting.
Moved and, moved by David, seconded by Noah. Um, discussion? See no discussion? Call for a call vote.
Wendy?
Yes.
Kristen?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Annie?
Yep, I'm still here.
Still here.
Oh, Annie, you too.
Dan?
Yes.
Noah?
Yes.
Leslie?
Yes.
Patricia?
Yes.
Chad?
Yes.
Sean?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
David Twitchell?
Yes.
Tom is not here. Kate is not here. That's it.
All right, it passes unanimously. All right, approval of minutes of September tenth, twenty twenty-five special board meeting.
I move, we approve the minutes of September tenth, twenty twenty-five special board meeting.
Second.
Uh, moved and seconded, uh, Kristen seconded it?
Yes.
Uh, moved and seconded, any discussion? Karen, no discussion. Um, call for a call.
Wendy?
Yes.
Kristen?
Yes.
David G?
Yes.
Annie?
Yes.
Yeah.
Dan?
Yes.
Noah?
Yes.
Leslie?
Yes.
Patricia?
Yes.
Chad?
Yes.
Sean?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
David?
Yes. All right, and it passed unanimously.
A ball, perfect.
Perfect. All right, moving on to C. Waving of student fees for football and soccer.
Or events.
Yeah, events in general. Mandy, I think you have a little presentation. I know Brent's here as well, so thank you.
It's not a huge presentation. It's just, there's a couple of handouts in your additional materials.
Um, I'm sorry, here.
There were some questions as to, from my understanding, there were some questions as to what happens, um, when we collect fees for basketball games, football games, things of that nature. Um, and during the budget process, um, just to kind of give you an overview of how it works. So we have two different sides to the budget. You have your expenditure side and you have your revenue side. The board approves both of those. Um, so on the revenue side, part of, one of the lines in the revenue sheet is, um, gate and officials' fees. Um, and there's other things that are in that line as well and it's described on the revenue sheet. Um, but one of the things is gate fees, um, and like theater fees, um, play fees, things like that. So that's where that money goes. That money goes to support the general fund budget. Um, one of the things that, um, we had heard was if we don't collect football fees, does that mean football gets cut? Um, it's not how it works. Again, this is an overall, when we build the budget, we build the general fund budget as an overall picture. We do talk about individual things, but they're not driven specifically by a specific source of revenue. They're driven by revenue as a whole. Um, and again, this is just one piece of the revenue. Um, so when you're looking at the revenue, you have various different types of miscellaneous revenue. Um, this is just one of those types of revenue. Um, so the first sheet talks about admissions that we do charge. Um, we do charge admission to, um, football and basketball games, um, to the general public. And we also charge, um, admission to the fall musical and the spring play, um, again, to general public, public. So all the general public pay for all four of those events. Um, at this time, my understanding, um, Brent and I talked about this, and my understanding is that staff do not pay admission, um, for these events. Um, staff currently get in free to those events. Um, students do not pay for basketball, however, they have, um, paid for football. Um, and then they also pay for the, um, staff, sorry, staff and students also pay for the spring play and the, uh, fall musical. So that's kind of where we're at at this time. The question that came up was as far as who pays, was students paying at the, um, football games? The only students that we were aware of that were getting in free were the youth, I guess there was a program that the youth football team, if they wore their jerseys, could get in free. Um, but regular students would, were paying prior to Friday, were paying to get into the football game. Um, the next sheet shows, um, the revenue over the last three years, just to take a look at it. Again, this is just one piece of the revenue that supports the overall budget. Um, so you can see, um, that that revenue has gone down in three years. Um, when you look at twenty-three, twenty-four to twenty-four, twenty-five, um, we did, we did at one point collect students, um, paid fees for basketball games and they stopped. We stopped doing that. Um, so you can see the decline in the revenue, um, from that as a result of that. Um, so other than that, our numbers are, um, you know, the fall musical is, you know, up one year, down the next, not by a lot. Um, spring, um, play is again somewhat consistent. It did go down a little bit in twenty-four, twenty-five. Um, and then you can see the basketball went down, um, each year. And again, that had to do with not charging students anymore. So, um, I just was asked to kind of give an overview of what that, what the revenue is used for. Some people were throwing out that it goes to Austin Bear Society. It does not. Um, it is funds that help support our general fund budget as a whole. I don't know if anybody has any questions?
David? Yeah, do you know a percentage of that is students versus like general public?
So, um.
I know you can't give the exact.
Yeah, so best estimate, um, was probably the spring, uh, the, the musical and the play is about ten percent.
Student?
Uh, maybe students. Um, again, I'd have to get more solid data. Um, and I don't, I, we don't have that at this time. We didn't, weren't able to get that. Um, the students for the football, um, we're guessing around eighteen hundred dollars would be the, the reduction in that as well.
Okay, thank you.
So where this came from was, there was, I don't wanna rehash history, so I'm not going to. I was under the understanding, those conversations I had with, and others had come to me, that this was gonna be solved. Not blaming anybody, not gonna do that, because I'm moving forward. And the first football game, I started getting some calls from people. It says on the website or the Facebook page, students have to pay. And I was like, let me get on it. So I called and this is where we are. I truthfully believe that we shouldn't be charging students of Marana Cook to go to games or the plays. We can't control what happens to, pretty much every Friday night, I am at a football game, so it varies. So here you go. And I, and students charge how much it costs to get in. I love high school football, have my whole life. And so, but I think our Marana Cook kids, I've seen kids myself sitting to wait till halftime to get into games, other parents paying so they don't have to sit in the games. I'm not saying it's huge crowd. But I think in the avenue of school spirit and all that, Marana Cook kids shouldn't have to pay to go to these events. And it's not a huge loss of revenue and it's, and correct me if I'm wrong, and I'm probably going to be, or I don't know, but it's actually not a loss of revenue for this year because this cash gets carried forward. Is that correct? Like it carries forward and then it would lower next year? How does that work?
So note, the way that a budget works is each year, whatever revenue we take in for that year is allocated to that budget for that year. If we have revenue that, if your expenditures are less than your revenue at the end of the year, then that goes into the carry forward for the next year. So when it, in a sense, it is lost revenue to this year, but we did have a carry forward from the previous year.
That's what I, yeah, you explained it much better than me. So, uh, yeah, Brian.
Am I correct in understanding that there are certain games, like when you get to playoffs, that main principals association has a fee? Because I think that's part of the, that's part of confusion. You'll, you'll go watch a game all year and then all of a sudden you gotta pay money. Why don't I gotta pay money now? And the, and the flip side of that is a lot of other towns are helping us pay for this, right?
Correct.
So maybe thirty percent of your twenty grand a year gets paid for by visiting schools. So, and every, it seems like every school I go to to watch anything charges us money to, to participate.
I went to a middle school basketball game and I had to pay to get in last year.
Yeah. So, um, but how does it, do we know how the main principals association works?
Do you mind stepping up and answering?
Do we have a resident that hurt anyone in the audience?
So yeah, we just wanna be clear that if it comes to the end of the season and all our teams are crushing it and they're in the championship.
Yeah, so first, if I may, if it would have been communicated to me ahead of time that the board or whoever it was didn't want me charging students, I obviously would have done that. So to find out about it on Friday morning of the football game, that that was supposed to be communicated to me previously and it wasn't, I, made me very upset because it made me look bad. It made me look bad. There was a miscommunication somewhere. It wasn't me. I was never spoken to once about charging students at the first football game. So I just wanna make sure that's clear. Um, question was about the NPA and, and all that. Yeah, we do not charge regular season games for students ever. Um, for basketball, like, like you said, we were going to do just the four regular season football games. With football, if you make the playoffs, if you host quarterfinals or semifinals, you collect a gate at your place and after the, um, school keeps their portion of it, like after I pay my workers and, and all that stuff, um, a percentage of that would go to the league. So it's a league playoff game. When you get to a regional for football or a state, that's strictly through the, uh, NPA. So we don't, we don't see any of that. None of that's our revenue. Soccer, we don't charge ever for any soccer games at all, regular season. We don't charge for playoffs at all either. The only time anyone would charge, get charged for soccer is again, regional and state. Same thing for lacrosse. Um, basketball, we charge during the regular season, only adults. And then same thing. Now all the tournament games are through the NPA with the basketball. The only exception might be a preliminary game. And if we were hosting preliminary game, it's the same exact process. We would only be charging the adults, not the students. And then when you get the NPA, they charge you, um, for all the, all the playoff games, quarters, semis and all that stuff. Yeah. Um, I think Mandy explained it pretty well that if we don't charge the students at a football game, it's roughly eighteen hundred dollars in lost revenue. With the play, I did get some better numbers today. Um, the current admission prices are ten dollars for adults and eight dollars for students. And Dan Gilbert told me it's closer to thirty percent of students being, excuse me, at those, at those events. So, um, a proposal that I would have, I have to pay through that general budget and the revenue side is where we pay for people to operate the clock at basketball games, people to be admin, administrators on site when I'm in two places at once, maybe covering a volleyball game or something like that. Um, so that money comes from there. So my proposal would be to add a line in the budget that covers that directly every school year. So I know that I've got X amount of dollars to pay a certain individual to run the score clock for basketball games or for lacrosse games or something like that. So, um, that's my plan is to put that into my budget when we meet in December and January. Obviously you guys can shoot it down, but
No, I.
That's my plan because I think it would streamline that part of it and it'd make it a lot easier on the athletic side to just say, we're only charging adults. We're never gonna charge students ever. And then that would make up for that.
That, that makes sense. Thank you so much for.
Yeah, no problem. And if any time, any, any of you have any questions about anything, just, just email me. I'll answer you like very quickly. Um, hearing it later, it, it's, it's tough to do that because I'm taking a lot of slack lately for stuff that I'm just, I have no clue this about. So.
Mr. Holman?
Um, two questions, um, under mine. Um, the school players, the high school players, barely ever miss one and they're often sold out. Do you see any issues with that in terms of capacity? And you, do you think there'd be any impact in terms of behaviors positively or negatively in terms of what this would do in terms of, you know, games?
No, I don't, I think the behaviors would be the same. We'd still have missing persons. We'd still have kids throwing footballs inappropriately. You know, those types of things, but yeah. Is that what you meant?
In terms of sports, yes. In terms of the, um, the plays, do you see issues with capacity there potentially?
No, like you said, he pretty much sells out. Um, I don't know. He might have to put a limit on the number of adult versus student tickets possibly because if you open it up to students not having to pay, if they're able to jump online before their parents do, they might sell those out. Which he could possibly, you know, I can't speak for Dan, but maybe explore a, a student-only performance. So that way, that would eliminate, you know, the students taking away from, because I remember the middle school, you remember last two years, we had a middle school performance for the middle school kids. And it was basically an assembly in here and then, um, she did two performances over the weekend. So that could be a possibility. I know the theater's strung right out as far as number of performances, so I don't know if they could maybe do their rehearsal as a student-only type of event. But again, I'm, I don't speak for Dan.
Yeah, I'm, I'm sure they can figure a system to students to get so many tickets and a lottery or something. Uh, Kristen?
So I understand that we are moving forward, but just out of pure curiosity, what's the, what was the reasoning why certain sports were charged for and then others weren't?
Yeah, so usually basketball and football are, are your largest spectator sport. So I know for a long time, even before I came here, those were traditionally the, the two events that got charged. Um, then some schools would start charging if they had night games because they had to pay for their lights separately. Um, when I came here almost seven years ago, it was, it was practice to charge at basketball games and football games like most people do. And at the time, football was not funded at all through the school district. They had to come up with every single dime for their programs. So that money that they were collecting at football games was going, uh, directly to them. And then it started to slowly, um, change and shift over where I think the first year we were able to get fifty percent of their costs in the budget. And then we call it one hundred percent funding right now for football, even though they still gotta raise money for pads and helmets. Um, but that's where that kind of.
There's a cost issue.
Yeah. Yeah, it wasn't like picking one over the other necessarily. Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Mr. Fortson?
Oh, you go first. Um, I'm glad that it came to the board because I don't think it's a budget decision. I don't think it should be made without the board approving it. Uh, so I'm glad it came to the board and I'm not against it. I do, just personally, I see, uh, the musicals and plays as separate from the, uh, games, uh, not because they're better or worse, just the format is different as we noted the, you know, there's attendance, yeah, so much room, thank you. Uh, so personally, I think they ought to be handled separately and it works to leave them, leave the charge on. For everyone, for that matter, it sells out anyway. So it's not like it's keeping people away that wanna go.
I, I mean, I personally think it's the way it is.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'm looking at you, but I'm.
Right, yeah.
Yeah.
Wendy?
Um, regarding the plays and everything, I agree with David. I would like to talk to Mr. Gilbert or somebody in the place to see if this is going to be a positive or negative thing. I'd like more information from the place.
Well, they have to pay for copyright.
Right, but this money.
Yeah, we have, but we, we've got a budget for that. We have a dues and fees line that pays for copywriting, the scripts, um, for their costumes.
So you're pretty confident at home?
Thank you.
Yeah.
I don't think it's not worth asking.
No, no, I know what you're asking. I'm seeing from a budget standpoint.
Okay.
From a negative or positive impact. Like next year in the budget, we'll just have to come up with, um, I don't know, like all these percentages. Maybe ten thousand dollars more because we're not charging. In the scheme of life, I don't think that's that much. But I think what you may be getting at is if all these students can go to free, does that have a negative impact?
Yeah, I. They should get to weigh in. I just wanted to hear from the, the people, that Mr. Gilbert, whoever's managing. Managing, yeah.
So why don't we split it in half then?
Yes.
The foot, because we have a football game coming up.
Yeah.
Friday.
Friday.
Yeah, good.
I have it, yes, I'll be there. Uh, Friday night. So that's kind of why I wanted to get this on the agenda. The play isn't coming up till, someone tell me.
November.
November. So we got a little bit of wiggle over that. So I think we should split them in half and worry about, well, basketball, we don't have to worry about, I learned, and I couldn't remember, I've been to games, but probably. And I couldn't remember, I've been to games, but probably my son spends my money on popcorn.
He does.
Yeah, so he takes money. But anyway, so I think that's what we should do.
So we started this past Friday night. I don't know if, if you saw the signs coming in, but it was just adults and students from other schools and seniors. We didn't charge any of our kids from the small all the way to seniors. Um, and then I looked at, you know, af, after collecting that money, it was close to five hundred dollars lower than we normally would have brought in for a game.
So I do want to say that we, um, I think it's a bigger thing here about how we plan for certain things and how we raise money. Um, and that a lot of things we just talked about, we suddenly got concerned with, but our administrators can put these things into their budget. Whether we're paying at the gate or we pay at vote and pay with taxes, like, we can squash a lot of sort of, uh, the rumblings that sort of come up for every little community engagement thing that we have if we're trying to continue to move forward and find the way to bring the district and the school and our partnership together back to a place that has had a lot of conversations. So I think, you know, Brand's right on when he says, you know, if this is what we do, I just need to add these things into my budget. Great. But I mean, I think that even with other things, how we fundraise and how transparent we are in, in how we fundraise and what we're fundraising for, I think has a lot to be desired. I just got one today. Um, and when I get one that says the fundraising is for equipment, it does put up, it puts up some flags because that's not super clear. I asked some clarifying questions. But through that, like, you can't really tell what something is really for. I think if we are able to walk, we're far enough ahead of budget season at this point to think about which things can we include that takes the complexity out of some of this, that we're not nickel and diming these decisions that we don't need to do on your, you know, for you, to you, with you, with, like, all the things. Put in what we think that we need to cover a lot of the things that have been in discussion for the last year. And then we can, people can, there can still be concerted efforts to raise money if we're clear on what we're raising it for. I think it's easier for people to get behind what that is if they understood what it was specifically, sort of what something's for.
Yeah.
And, and when it's vague, I think it's harder to get behind that. And so, um, there's lots of ideas around that, but I would generally say we were sort of in this little nickel and diming place that sounds like we can solve that and we're far enough ahead. But we can try to make some of this more consistently straightforward and easier for everybody to remember what the details are.
Yeah. I have some thoughts on that, but I'm gonna, my other stuff.
Um, yeah, since we're talking about, um, recovering lost revenue, you keep repeating, and I've known from the past that the, um, the fall musical, you know, it's, uh, always sells out. Has it been thought about extending an extra night or two?
You should see them at the end of the performances. I mean, they, they're dead.
How many nights is it usually two?
No, it's like four. Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, so five. They do five days straight.
Okay.
And then on top of that, they're doing their own rehearsals without an audience probably every night until sometimes seven or eight. You got some parents here that had, had some kids in it that are used to it.
I thought it was usually two, so, okay.
Yeah, it's, yeah. You see them walking in Monday and it's like this.
Chad, go ahead.
I've been a part of the playset, the theater for the last four years, five years. My daughter graduated three years ago, Wendy. Y'all know each other. Here's the theater. These kids are hardcore. I think playing ball musical should be completely separate from football, basketball. I think it's, it's a hundred percent gift in every aspect. Because every day, I spend every Sunday, twelve weeks, every year, years ago, playing a building, just a building, just a football. But you start, you guys mentioned maybe a show for free for the kids. I'm gonna step out from the kids' performance. It's, it's performing Wednesday night. It's a free show for everybody. Then there's Thursday, then there's Friday, Saturday, the double, Sunday, Monday. Didn't have breakdowns. Again, they're dead by Sunday. They're, they're zombies by Sunday. And then I think a lot of Mondays off because I don't want the parents to break down this set on Sunday night because we're all exhausted. So, uh, I need to speak more, I wouldn't.
Agreed. Yeah, great.
I think the important part with the musical and the play is that there's already a free night. So Wednesday night for the rest of their performances, it's free to everybody. Kids, staff, the public, everybody. So, I mean, I think like Chad said, they're completely different. And I, I think we should move on to football, but ball, play and, and the play and the musical should not be.
Yeah, no, I, I fully agree.
You can book them online. You can book them online. Apparently, kids, those young home parents, they're so good. I don't think it's easy. But you take in Miami, you gotta buy the board, mom. I just had them donate five thousand dollars worth of private. We private a full stage this year. We did it this time. We can ask the school for a dollar. And the board can ask the school for a dollar. And it's got another two thousand dollar donation to just move it to the next set. And then ask the school for a dollar, like. But the money that, the revenue that comes in goes to cost, goes, goes to snacks. Wendy's very much understanding. She knows what you're talking about. Just keep the program alive, like. If you're looking, I've asked Andy earlier. We just got a similar meeting. I have more info as to how the trends go. I asked him to, to do your question this week. His numbers are up. I see the peak, the peak value. I'm afraid it's in such a progress. It's not, it's not just this. We've got, we've asked for them, this is not a problem. Now, the cost of it, now.
Pretty, pretty powerful. No, it's awesome. It's great. My daughter did it. So no, I, I hear you on the plays. But I want to be clear, the, the thought is, and I, I actually asked about basketball and football, I didn't even hear, think of that. But anyway, point is, is it's not to like make the football and basketball budget X amount of dollars less. It's just not to nickel and dime a ten-year-old who wants to go to the football game with his older sister who's a junior in high school and nickel and dime her. We would replace it with everyone's tax dollars, who pays tax dollars in our S38. It's not to, I just want to be clear on that.
I have a question from a couple of the coaches for football. I was on the, where a couple was supporting football. I know when I was younger, they didn't. When we brought it back ninety-eight, ninety-nine, it was a hundred and seventy parents. No, I didn't know how much it cost, right? I've been trying to learn that.
I, I couldn't get.
So I didn't want this to have an impact on them if they were fully funded on their own.
No, exactly. It's not to take funding. It's still gonna be funded because the money, Mandy cancers, is still there. And then next year's budget, we just increase that line by more because we're not taking cash from people. So it's, the point is not. And to Leslie's point, I think the policy committee needs to look at how fundraising works. I've heard that loud and clear from a lot of parents. And then number two, I, my suggestion is, is like Sean Drinkwater, I know it's the only example I can think of, comes in with the Cadillac of millions of dollars worth of repairs, and we have to tone it down. My suggestion to you, Brand, is, is you come in with everything you need possibly, and then it gets pared down eventually with, or maybe not. I don't, maybe not. But we need to know these things because, like, I've heard from coaches, well, this is broken or that's broken. I know that's not what the conversation. And I'm like, well, why are you asking me? I have no idea that was broken and, and Brand doesn't have money to buy it. And again, you don't need to run to me every time. But you, you're trying to be responsible. But I think we need to know the global picture.
No, I, I really appreciate you saying that because a goal of mine this year was to, to let everybody know what we really do need.
Yeah.
Yes.
And like today, I had sports fields out here. Today, giving me a quote on a field that needs attention, so.
More comment, but, so I'm the Awesome Bear Society liaison, and I know they have some concerns too. So I thought this was a really good time to bring that up. And I have had thoughts. I actually wanted to talk to you at the end of the meeting. But, you know, working together with yourself and the Awesome Bear Society to, when the budget comes up, be better than we were last year um, at bringing to the board what, what they needed, so.
And that's, yeah, I guess that's a request. Or everything you need, even if it's.
Yeah, the fundraising, the fundraising part is, is really tough for everybody, including me, because in a perfect world, I think Leslie, you were kind of getting at that, we wouldn't have to fundraise. You know, if, if there's a team that needs a piece of equipment, they shouldn't have to fundraise. It's just something that we should be able to buy, you know, through our budget. But, you know, every year, it's, I know since I've been here, every time when I review the budget, it's like, well, we, we can't increase anything here because we're gonna have increases there and there and all over. I'm like, okay. You know, so then it's like we rely on Awesome Bear and we rely on the individual teams, you know, to, to raise the money, so.
Yeah.
There's a little off, I think this needs to be a future item to include. More people are really getting off track here. And I think we have some steps for us to take, um, the budget, look at the fundraising policy on a global, how fundraising should work. Because this fundraiser is that, I don't quite, I don't know. I'm not saying anything's done, being done wrong because I don't want to point. But there's, and I don't think Leslie's saying that. But there's this fundraiser, I'm vending money to, I don't know when to say no. My wife tells me I need to learn, but I'm just, they're like, I'm sitting at the soccer game and I think I've been, well, Leslie conned me into vending money to somebody. But anyway, but the point is, is that needs to be looked at and explained to the board how that works. And I think the policy committee is in deeper place to make this conversation.
Yeah, and if you need to share.
Well, back to the communication piece with Chad saying um, he wasn't sure what the state was of like a status of a program. Like, is it a co-op? Is it like funded by us? Is it this? Like, I think if that stuff's really clear too, and I know we accept donations, uh, at, at different board meetings, some of those donations look to be consistently going into places that are, are needed. But I wonder if there's just another way that if folks knew what Chad was just talking about for that, like, hey, this is a bigger piece that we want to try and accomplish if, if anybody wants to contribute to this really specific thing for theater. Like, folks, if they knew what the options were to contribute something, then there may be an easier way to, to get that. And, and I admire everything you said, but back to the communication piece. If we're sure, we know where things live and that the basic needs, if there's something big or whatever, it becomes really clear. This is the thing that we haven't, we set aside that was too big and we want to go after. Then people are really clear on what we're going after and what they're contributing for. Like, I think we can still accomplish all things. I'm not saying don't get rid of fundraising.
No, I'm not saying, like, like, why are we fundraising to, I don't know. Yeah, keep my. David?
I want to go home tonight, so I'm gonna make a motion that we remove all fees, uh, from student, the Miranda Cook student attendees to all our events.
Supporting events. Supporting events that we charge.
They need to be charged for.
Second.
They're moved in second. We had a lot of discussion, but I'll still do it because it's the proper thing to do. Any more discussion?
Is it, is it a motion that needs a second?
We had a second.
Dennis.
Motion was David and had seconded, right? Is that correct? Yes. So, all right, we're gonna call for a roll call.
Okay, Wendy?
Yes.
Kristen?
Yes.
David G?
Yes.
Annie?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Noah?
Yes.
Leslie?
Yes.
Patricia?
Yes.
Chad?
Yes.
Sean?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Unanimous. Thank you, everybody. And we have more homework to do from all that discussion. Brand, we'll welcome you back. I said we'll welcome you back soon.
Yeah, yeah, come on back.
So, um.
Resignation.
Yep, I was just getting there. Resignation, fifth grade teacher, Jill Worcester, Wayne Elementary School.
I move that we accept the resignation of Jill Worcester, grade five teacher at Wayne Elementary School.
Second.
All right, moved in second in discussion. So I am gonna ask for some discussion because we're in the middle of the school year and I think people are gonna want to know what the plan is because we have twelve kiddos who need a teacher. So I think we have a plan in our, maybe not in our bracket, but do you?
Uh, so I've worked with Jeanette Jacobs, principal of Wayne. Um, and, uh, she has a plan in place. The job posting, um, it was, it's already been posted. So, um, she has a, uh, Joe's last day will be September twenty-sixth. And she has a, uh, substitute that, um, has subbed at, uh, Wayne in the last couple of years, um, is very familiar with the students in this classroom,